Call the meeting order for the City Council Regular Meeting for Wednesday, November 21st. Will the City Clerk call the order and roll call, please, the City Clerk?
Councilmember Newton, Councilmember Hannah, Councilmember Bash, Mayor Pro Tem Grunmeyer, Mayor Hoffman.
Yes.
All present.
And pledge allegiance to my mayor, Pro Tem Robin Grunmeyer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for Pastor Michelle from the Word Faith Fellowship Church for the invocation.
Happy Thanksgiving. I am so grateful to be here tonight, the night before Thanksgiving, because I am grateful for each of you and who you've been in my life and who you are in the community. So, thank you. Let me read to you something really quick from Psalm 105. Give thanks to the Lord; call on his name; make known among the nations what he has done. Sing to him; sing praise to him; tell of his wonderful acts. Glory to his name; let the hearts of those who seek the Lord rejoice. Look to the Lord and his strength; seek his face always. Would you pray with me? Lord, in this world full of turmoil and challenges, we are so grateful that we can stop tonight and give you thanks. We thank you for a country where we are free to say thank you and a country where we are free to meet. Lord, we are grateful for those who have fought and who continue to fight for those freedoms. Lord, I thank you for leaders who dare to lead with integrity and passion and for a community that cares. Lord, we thank you for our family and our friends, for those who have gone before us to pave the way. Lord, we thank you. We invoke and invite your presence here tonight. Thank you for this council that seeks the common good for Norco. Lord, bless them as they give of their time, their talents, and even treasures to serve others. May the ideas and the decisions here tonight bring only what is good and honorable and right. Lord, would you bless Mayor Hoffman and Mayor Pro Tem Grunmeyer and Councilmen Hannah, Newton, and Bash as they serve you and as they serve this community? Thank you, Lord, for Norco. God bless the United States of America and God bless Horsetown, USA. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Michelle. Can I have all the council members join me and do our business appreciation honorary for Compare Carpets and Hard Force?
Since there's not a large crowd, we can kind of socialize a little bit here, it looks like. So, anyways, good evening, everybody. Those that are here pretty much know who I am. I'm Scott DeRosa and I'm with Norco's Economic Development Advisory Council. And I'm here to assist Mayor Hoffman, along with the City Council, with the presentation of this month's Business Appreciation Award being presented to Compare Carpets. We have Mike Jones up here, who is related to the two owners of Compared Carpets. And to give you a little bit of background about them, in 1988, two young high schoolers named Mark McCall and Joel Bowman began working for Mars Carpets, which at the time was located at 1701 Hamner Avenue here in Norco, as carpet installers. In 1984, Mark and Joel purchased Mars Carpet and renamed it Compare Carpets. These two young men, fresh out of high school, worked hard to build their new business while keeping a belief in their hearts always. Their belief was that being a small business is a privilege and a small business should strive to do something for their local community annually at a minimum. With that belief, they began hosting an annual barbecue competition every September to raise awareness and funds for pediatric cancer. With the help of Michelle and Andy Vega, Jules and Don Farmer, and Chico Romero, the event has grown and become very popular. To date, they have raised a net of $39,222 for pediatric cancer and research. And please note the part about this is a net raised of $39,222. Compare Carpets also helps Norco families during the holidays. Through our local schools, a family in need is usually identified. Then Compare Carpets raises funds by exchanging carpet remnants for cash donations. This money is then anonymously donated to the family as a Secret Santa gift. Compare Carpets is also involved in raising money for No Drama Ranch and also RAOK Riverside, which is also known as Random Act of Kindness. The money raised for RAOK has helped out many people, such as the Women's Shelter of Riverside. So, I am proud to be here to present to and help the City Council and Mayor present to Compare Carpets this award of awareness and recognition. The plaque reads, "The City of Norco hereby honors Compare Carpets and Hard Floors for enhancing Norco homes for nearly 35 years and for its inspiring commitment to charity and philanthropy, which reflects the true spirit of Horsetown, USA." Thank you very much. Head of Mike, if you'd say a few words?
First of all, I want to thank all these guys here. They've been to every event that we've had. That includes Donna's event at NDR. And there's some folks missing here, too. So, these guys have supported us all through the way, as well as Vega Apparel, Colonel Piggy, and Jules Farmer, as you mentioned. This is not Compare. It takes a village. I guess the only thing I would want you to know is the same thing that I said at the event at, oh my God, I'm going to lost that. No, 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 at the, no, no, at the, in Eastvale.
Oh, at the Chamber.
At the Chamber, yes. We gave a long, very long, you know, deep, yes, at that one, at the Business Appreciation, when Doc won Business of the Year, whatever happened to those pictures? If I was Doc, I'd be so bummed out that that never, he won Businessman of the Year, right? Or Norco Business of the Year at that event. I gave a two-minute speech about pediatric cancer at that event, so I won't do that again. What we want you to know is that childhood cancer kills more of our kids than all of those other diseases combined. So, if you put all the childhood diseases together, pediatric cancer kills more of them than all those combined. And that only accidents kill more of our kids every year. Six a day, just in the U.S. alone, with 46 new diagnoses, and they only get 4% of the federal cancer research budget. So, we just believe that we can do better as a country. The federal government needs to give them more than 4%. So, that's what I'll leave you with. Thank you, guys, so much, and thank you to all these guys behind me.
We're going to have a photo, right? We got a photo. Want us in front, Matt? We're going to get in the front.
Orders, they left today for Thanksgiving vacation. They wanted me to say they're very appreciative of this award and we would love a picture for our website. And yes, well, before I forget, we do have remnants of carpets that we give away for donations. This year, our Secret Santa, and I'll tell you guys, it's Mrs. Sanchez at Riverview Elementary. Oh, never mind. I'm just kidding. We don't have a Secret Santa this year. We've stopped doing that. But we do have remnants at Compare for a different Secret Santa, so please come by. Dang, I forgot. Dang. Let's edit. I totally forgot.
Our IT guy's here. He can answer.
Yes, absolutely.
Just so you know, this is a very inspirational speech.
Well, it kept clicking out. If you did fix that, I prepped for like, I prepped that one for days and then the monitor went out and I was like, I'm just going to yell.
All right, moving right along. City Council Communication Reports on Regional Boards and Commissions. Bruin?
I'll probably give these again next month since there are not that many here to that. But the vector control always comes up with some interesting presentations when we have our board meeting out there. Actually, some of them are pretty good, some of them are pretty gross, when they go to squashing rats and whatever. But they gave a report the other day, you know how they have these dogs that are trained for different things, like they got comfort dogs, they got drug sniffing dogs, they got worse than that. Now, they, over in Europe, they're training dogs to sniff for malaria. And they're using them at the airports when people get off of the plane, so they sniff their ankles. And they've actually said it's about an 80-something percent success rate. You could be carrying the malaria in your system and not know it, but these dogs are finding it. So, that's something new. And like I said, that was one of the better presentations. At RCTC, do you all know what the Freeway Service Patrol is? The trucks that sit on the freeway during the peak hours and if you break down, they'll take you off at the nearest ramp and unhook you and you have to call your own tow truck or mechanic. Well, we voted to extend the hours during the construction of the 15 and the 91, so we've added extra trucks and extra hours on there for the next three years or four years, I guess it's going to be. Because the traffic's bad and people get broke down and everything, they need to get them out of the way as quick as they can. And with RTA, our buses, beginning December 21st through January 13th, we have the 25-cent youth fares again. That's been a big success for about the last four years. This last summer, the ridership was up about 30 or 40% from the summer before. But it helps kids be able to afford to go to Disneyland, places like that, go to the beach, 25 cents each way. All they have to do is show their student ID card, and I think the age limit cutoff is 18. But on top of that, the ridership has gone way up this last month. Everything's good. Thank you.
Robin?
Nothing.
Kevin? Greg? Other than a league meeting, which they recap for the year, I have nothing else. So, moving right along to City Council Consent Items. Do you have anybody who wants anything polled?
D and E.
D.
Question approved the rest.
We have a first and a second.
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
Greg, you pulled D.
Yes, thank you. Couple of questions. Chad, on this connection, which I support, do you have an estimate of the yearly maintenance that will be occurring on this connection?
The maintenance is going to be borne by Western, by Riverside, excuse me.
Okay, so we won't have any?
Yeah, they're actually maintaining this. We're just funding 50% of the initial construction, but they're maintaining the actual connection.
Okay, so we won't have to touch it?
No.
Great. Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Do you want a roll call?
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
And Greg, you had D.
Yes, thank you. Couple of questions. Chad, on this connection, which I support, do you have an estimate of the yearly maintenance that will be occurring on this connection?
The maintenance is going to be borne by Western, by Riverside, excuse me.
Okay, so we won't have any?
Yeah, they're actually maintaining this. We're just funding 50% of the initial construction, but they're maintaining the actual connection.
Okay, so we won't have to touch it?
No.
Great. Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Do you want a roll call?
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
And Greg, you had D.
Yes, thank you. I know we've been over this one before and maybe I'm a little slow with it, but we're going to be giving up $240,000 in revenue. And the statement in the staff report is this will be offset in reduced purchase water from external water suppliers. Am I safe to assume that this water to these two customers, is that Arlington Desalter water primarily? Probably primarily, that or CDA. Okay. But we don't have a definite number for the offset in reduced purchase water. And I guess my concern is that both of these contracts, whether CDA or Arlington Desalter, are take or pay. Do we exceed, let's say Arlington Desalter, are we exceeding our limit, 4,500 acre feet or something like that a year?
Well, it's not a limit, it's our minimum that we have to do. So, we certainly exceed that number because we always have to at least be that. Actually, the higher we go with that number, our actual costs go down. So, that's the minimum number to operate at a certain level of efficiency to ascribe to the cost that we agree to for each fiscal year. If we actually produce more, we actually get a reduction, that cost goes down in efficiency because we produce more water over that assumed cost. So, each of these last few years, we definitely have been getting a refund back from Western because when they did the final numbers, because of the production we actually had, our cost of water went down. And then, so they credit us back a couple hundred thousand dollars a year towards that cost of the plant.
Do you see the possibility that our costs could exceed, or I'm sorry, yeah, I guess our cost would, that will, how do I want to put this, that we'll be saving money, we're going to lose $240,000 in revenue, but are we going to save that or more in cost?
It's tough to say. I think, and I'm anticipating really just being a wash. I mean, because while certainly the cemetery is a big user, it's not such that a user really would impact our ability to produce enough water from Arlington to make the cost effective. Like, if it dropped just below $4,000, let's say, then I'd be concerned that, yeah, our cost of water is going to go up. But our demands are, actually have been increasing a little bit year after year, so I don't think that's a concern, that we're not going to meet those minimum targets to try to keep the water at a reasonable price, which is under $1,000 an acre foot. And so, but it's a tough, it's hard for me to tell, honestly. And I looked at, I tried to figure out if I could come up with what that offset would be. And the assumption is that simply we're just going to produce that little amount of water from Arlington or CDA, which reduce our overall costs. But our demand is high enough that it's still going to exceed 4,400 on Arlington and the extra thousand we have to have on CDA. We're like 6,500 acre feet we need a year. And so, between the two, it's about 5,500. So, it's not going to hurt us, I don't believe.
Promise?
Yeah. But I'm also going to be supplementing this next year, when we build our treatment plant, we're going to be adding more groundwater, which is going to help lower our costs because I'm going to produce more groundwater than necessary.
Okay. All right, thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a first and a second.
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, now is the time for public comments. This one person is the audience wishing to express the City Council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete the speaker card in the back of the room presented to the City Clerk so you may be recognized. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the City Council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time of such comments are made. The City Council shall not discuss or take actions relative to any general public comment.
Daniella Segovia.
Good evening, Danielle.
Good evening, everybody. I am here on behalf of several individuals who are not able to be here today. In the past, especially when you guys all brought up the wonderful Measure R, we expressed, several of us, the importance of social media and your need to have someone speak for you. Currently, there are two items that truly need to have your attention. The main one is with regards to everything that is going on with regards to CarMax on the corner of Valley View and Second. Now, evidently, this is a civics lesson that several people need to have, being we don't know the exact steps that need to be taken before everything ends up with all of you here. Now, we know that the Streets and Trails Department didn't just miraculously think and wake up one day and say, you know, we don't have anything to do, so let's just discuss what we would do on that corner should CarMax want to go there. Then we found out that they had approved it and that it was going to be going to the Planning Department, at which time, we don't know as a group if we need to show up at the Planning Department because we decided that we didn't need to show up here since I was going to show up. So, I believe that one of you, somebody, whoever gets the short straw, use it. Ted, we know that you get on it, especially when it was with Measure R, because you commented back to me with regard to my bait and switch that I always believed that Silver Lake is and will be until it is actually an equestrian facility. So, I know that you read it, I know Kevin's actually on it, so it would be nice if one of you would step up to the plate and address your constituents and let them know. Because your mouthpieces are not going to be able to do it for you forever. We did not elect them, we elected all of you. And since Planning Committee is next week, we need to know. Are we supposed to show up there? Are we supposed to picket? Are we supposed to contact the media? What are we going to do? It all depends on all of you. And we're not going to be caught behind the eight ball the way we were when your other group, well, most of them aren't here, but they decided to put that pack together and they came to you guys and said, we want to help you out. We don't want to help you out, we want answers. And the only one that can provide those answers are the five of you. Okay? That's the first part. The second part I wanted to cover was having someone for social media. A lot of your constituents are working and they can't be here. So, you end up with people like me or others that we come out and we speak. The last one, you all are so excited about how wonderful Soccer Town and Soccer Lake's doing, as you guys like to call it, Silver Lakes. Well, Eastvale really likes it, too. And their mayor recently came out and, because they're having a big function, national soccer competition, and Eastvale put out, let's all give a great big Eastvale welcome. Well, Eastvale isn't the company or the city that's ponying up all the money. City of Norco is. So, City of Norco better pony up with their people over in Eastvale, your counterparts. And if they're going to be taking all the credit and calling all the people to come there, they should pony up some of the money, too. I thank you very much for your time. Have a wonderful evening, and I will wait until you guys tell me what it is you want me to tell people. Also, do you want them to send emails?
We've got to finish it up, Danielle.
I am. Sending emails to all of you, send emails just to Greg, make phone calls, leave them on all of your voice messages? What do you want me to tell them? Thank you.
Jim Pollard.
Good evening, Jim.
Good evening. Well, I want to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, staff, and committee members. I want to thank Chad for all the water lines that are being installed in the city. I know the citizens don't realize the money spent, well-spent, in my opinion, to preserve something that we take for granted. And just a little shout-out to that and appreciate that and all your hard work and just have a great holiday and Thanksgiving. Thank you. And the citizens of Norco, too.
Thank you, Jim.
Lisa Rogers.
Good evening, Lisa.
Good evening. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone as well. My question or my answer, whatever, is actually addressed to Andy, and I just wanted to say thank you so much for being so proactive and getting involved with waste management and coming up with a new solution for people that have been having problems. I personally have never had a problem. I know others have not had a problem, but it seems like you were being very proactive and you got that information out there. And I just wanted to say thank you and that you're doing a great job, and I think all of you are doing a great job in trying to be as much as you can. You communicate with this community, whether people want to accept what you have to say or not, that is their prerogative. But I think the majority of the people understand that you're really, really trying to make an effort, so thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Thank you. Before I close the public comments, one thing. Next week, November 28th, at 7:00 p.m., the Planning Commission will have CarMax on their agenda as part of their public hearing process. So, you can, you may go there. That's, anyone's welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. We cannot say anything about it because it's not purview on our agenda.
I will just let the video go out. And what the council does?
Thank you. All right, moving on to 5A ordinance. This is a simply second reading. So, you want to do that or you want to?
Second read can be voted on without a reading of the.
Okay. Then, I just need a motion to approve. Got one motion to approve. Danielle, second?
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, this is 6A, discussion item. The 2018 progress report on the City of Norco's 2016 strategic plan. Andy, had yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a progress report on the city's 2016 strategic plan. If you recall, the strategic plan was unanimously approved by the City Council, as well as commissions and advisory councils of the City Council. The city's 2016 strategic plan included five strategic priorities that the City Council approved. Along with those five strategic directions, also included several action plans that we need to accomplish as a city in order to realize the goals of the strategic plan. We provided you our first report on this last year, and this is a second progress report. I'm happy to report that since that last progress report was provided to you, staff in working with the City Council, we have made a lot of progress towards achieving the five strategic priorities that were identified in the strategic plan. Ideally, a strategic plan is good for about five years, however, that needs some update during that period of time. In the interest of time, I will highlight the major accomplishments that have taken place during this reporting period and have a PowerPoint to go along with that, hopefully. Okay, here are the five strategic directions. I do not need to repeat those. Our number-one strategic plan was on infrastructure. And the first action plan pertaining to infrastructure was to establish funding for planning, maintenance, replacement, and development of infrastructure. And with that, we needed to complete a revenue measures study and present findings and recommendations to the City Council. As you know, this action was completed this past July, and as a result of that, Measure R was placed on the ballot this November. And following that action, Measure R was voted upon on November 6th and currently was approved by voters in the City of Norco. That is going to go a long way in terms of the city having some permanent funding to deal with our infrastructure needs here in the City of Norco. In order to do that right- Uh, in order, in order to do that revenue measure, we had to undertake a significant community outreach. And that outreach will continue, uh, as far as, uh, engaging the members of Norco residents. Uh, however, uh, the outreach related to the revenue measure was completed there on, in this, this November. The other action related to, uh, the strategic plan, uh, with respect to establishing funding for infrastructure deals with, uh, the approval of Measure R itself. Uh, again, uh, once that measure is approved, what do we do to make sure that the measure is implemented correctly? Uh, currently, uh, we are in contact with our sales tax consultant, HDL, as well as the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration to make sure we understand all the necessary steps that are going to be required in order to successfully implement, Part of funding the city's infrastructure also includes funding the requirements of capital needs for water and sewer, uh, operations. And though that is not covered by Measure R, uh, the way we fund infrastructure needs for water and sewer operations is through the rate process. Uh, as you recall, back in 2017, uh, the City Council approved, uh, several rate adjustments pertaining to the water and sewer rates. And those adjustments, we began to implement them in, in, in July of 2017 and have also made additional implementation in July of 2018. Uh, subsequent adjustments to the water rates are scheduled to go in effect on July 1, 2019 and 2020. With respect to the rates that were approved, uh, for the sewer system, uh, that has been suspended primarily because, uh, the sewer system is generating sufficient funds at this particular time, uh, to fund the city's infrastructure need with respect to, uh, to the sewer system. Let's see if I jumped something here. Also, part of our plan to, uh, fund city infrastructure need is to solicit grants. And, uh, that was on the previous page. Uh, and certainly, uh, staff has been doing that, although we have not contracted, uh, with anyone to actually do grant funding for us. Uh, we have been working with a consultant that is engaged by WR, WR cog, uh, to assist the member agencies in generating grants. And to date, we have been successful in generating a number of grants, uh, some of them directly, uh, from WR cog, uh, such as, uh, uh, Beyond Grant Program, uh, which is used to fund senior programs, uh, as well as, uh, traffic-related, uh, programs, traffic enforcement-related programs. In addition to those, to those grants that we have generated from WR cog, we have also continued to generate, uh, a CDBG funding, which helps us, uh, to fund infrastructure. Uh, on the operating side, the Police Department continues to generate, uh, Office of, uh, Transportation Safety Grant, uh, which is used to enforce traffic needs here in the City of Norco. Also, uh, we, as part of the action plan to generate funding for infrastructure, includes a revision to our general fee schedule, uh, to make sure that, uh, we are adequately recovering cost of providing, uh, city services, including potential replacement of infrastructure. Uh, we are currently under, a study is currently underway and will be coming to you, uh, sometime, uh, in the next couple of months. Community outreach is our strategic direction number two, and this, uh, deals us mostly with how we engage our Norco residents in terms of, uh, communicating with them. And certainly, part of that communication with, uh, Norco residents, uh, starts with customer service. Uh, we recognized that earlier on. As a result of that, uh, we have been backing on, uh, providing customer service training to our, uh, our employees, uh, to ensure consistency in the level of customer service we provide. Uh, part of what we've done in the past year is to actually, uh, put it right in what we call customer service scripts. And this is used by all, uh, city employees, uh, to answer residents' questions pertaining to city programs and, and, and activities. Uh, in addition to that, uh, we also continue to provide training for, uh, supervisory employees, uh, to assist them to, um, uh, be more competent in their various positions and to, to assume additional responsibilities in their organization. Continuing with our effort to, uh, again, engage the residents as well as, uh, to have internal communications that are efficient, uh, in the city. The city manager meets, uh, uh, at least on a quarterly basis or at least every other quarter with all city employees, uh, to provide information regarding, uh, city programs and services and what is, uh, going on, uh, with the city. Uh, in addition to that, we have developed, uh, means of communicating with all of our employees, uh, so that all employees receive our weekly newsletter, uh, which is, uh, the City, uh, Norco Newsroom. They also receive, uh, City Council Agenda Packet and information that go out to our Again, part of, uh, effectively engaging our residents is, is in, to ensure, uh, that we have a plan to replace, uh, positions that become vacant here in the City of, of Norco. And what we have done with that is what we call succession planning. And that process began, uh, last year and we identified all posi, critical positions here in the City of Norco and, uh, and came up with plans regarding how those positions could be filled when they become vacant. As a result of the plan that was developed in that process, uh, we used it to fill two positions that recently became vacant in the, uh, Festival and Support Services Department, namely the Accounting Manager position and the Utility Billing Clerk position. Uh, again, customer service, uh, is predicated on having, uh, city employees, uh, that are competent in their various responsibilities and duties here at the city. And part of what we want to do in order to make sure that that happens is, is to ensure that we have, uh, a compensation system in the City of Norco that recruits and, and, and attracts as well our returns, uh, qualified employees. And one of the action plan that we have implemented this past year to make sure that that happens is, uh, we did, uh, do our annual salary review and, uh, made some, uh, salary adjustments. However, I need to point out that there are still certain positions in the organization that are, uh, where compensation is beyond, is below market rate. And we'll continue to look at that situation and, uh, bring back to the City Council recommendations to ensure that we are able to recruit and retain qualified city employees. Uh, various, uh, communication platforms we have implemented in the city over the last couple of years. Uh, we continue to make progress on those. Uh, for example, our Twitter account, we have, uh, a lot more followers than we did last year. Uh, we currently, uh, have, uh, made improvements to our city website and to, in order to provide Uh, we have added, uh, as I said earlier, the Norco Newsroom, uh, which is, uh, a good way to receive information pertaining to what, uh, what is happening in the City of On our Facebook account, again, we continue to have a lot more likes than what we, where we are last year. Currently, we show fifty, over nearly 5,400 of likes on the city's, uh, website and 987 likes on the Animal Controls, uh, Facebook page. Uh, Norco app, uh, progress continues to be made there. Uh, we currently show nearly, uh, 4,000, 4,000 downloads of the app, uh, since it was implemented Public safety education programs, uh, is part of, uh, let's see where I am on that Uh, again, this is about leveraging technology to, uh, provide information to our residents. We talked about, uh, Newsroom and, uh, this one here is about public safety education programs, um, that we continue to, uh, do those. Uh, using information technology, uh, to, uh, again, communicate with our residents. Uh, one of the things we've done here, uh, is we have integrated our walk order system, uh, with the city's CIP program and, uh, have, uh, put that information online, uh, to show, uh, projects that are taking place in the City of Norco, including, uh, paving programs, uh, paving schedules, uh, tree trimming schedules, uh, as well as, uh, projects that are taking place on the trail system. I'll go back to public safety quickly. Uh, again, uh, this is, uh, here, uh, what we are doing in that area of public safety to, uh, again, to engage our, our residents. Uh, the unload program, uh, is still ongoing. Uh, neighborhood watch program as well as, uh, uh, business watch programs are continuing. Uh, in addition to that, through the town hall meetings that we have been having over the last year or two years, uh, we have been providing information with, uh, to our residents through the fire department and the police department. And code enforcement continues to, uh, uh, provide, uh, consistent code enforcement and to educate our, our residents, uh, on the need to, uh, keep their property, uh, from, uh, to, in compliance with the various code requirements. Uh, strategic direction number three has to do with the city's, uh, financial stability. Uh, and, uh, one of the things that we did again, uh, with the passage of Measure R, uh, which will ensure the city's, uh, future, uh, stability, uh, is, uh, again, that measure being passed. Uh, there are several other programs that, uh, we have, uh, been working on to make sure that the city's, uh, future financial stability is assured. So, part of what we wanted to do here, uh, as far as making sure that, uh, we provide financial stability, uh, is to identify new revenue sources and continue prudent financial management. In that area, one of the action plans we included in the strategic plan was to look for opportunities to refund existing debt of the city, uh, so that we can save money for the residents who pay for those debt as well as to, uh, save money for the City of Norco. So, in 2018, we were very successful in doing that. Uh, we refunded a couple of CFDs, Community Facilities District, the Norco Ridge Ranch, as well as the, uh, Norco Hills, uh, CFD. Um, the Norco Hills Ranch, the Norco Ridge Ranch provided a savings of, uh, 446 to 608 dollars per parcel to the residents in that district. And, uh, CFD for Norco Hills provided the savings of, uh, approximately 414 dollars annually, uh, to the residents in that district. Uh, we, in addition to refinancing those, uh, CFD debt, we also refinanced a couple of debt belonging to the Norco Successor, uh, Agency. Uh, these are, uh, revenue bonds that were issued by, uh, the former redevelopment agency that were refunded or refinanced during this, uh, 2018 period. In total, those two refinanced and saved the city a total of nine point, not the city, saved the Successor Agency a total of 9.1 million dollars, um, for the remaining 19-year period, uh, of those bonds. Uh, this for the City of Norco translates, the City of Norco's, uh, share of those savings is equal to about 77,000 dollars, um, annually, um, over the next, uh, 19 years. Uh, part of our, again, financial stability plan is to, uh, develop long, long-range financial plan, uh, for this, uh, for the water fund as well as the, the sewer fund. The progress on the water fund and sewer fund was done last year. Uh, this past year, 2018, as part of the revenue measure efforts, uh, we did put together a 10-year financial forecast, uh, for the general fund. Uh, we also wanted to complete a cost allocation studies and that, uh, that, that project is currently underway and will be completed and brought back to you here, uh, in the next couple of months. Uh, again, uh, one other effort that we are looking at in regards to, uh, providing financial stability to the city is the opportunity to, to refund or prepay our unfunded pension obligation liabilities as well as our retiree healthcare costs. And, uh, we are still continuing to review that option of refunding the, uh, of, of prepaying our unfunded pension liabilities. Um, it, but in the meantime, the city continues to set aside money to pay for retiree healthcare cost liabilities. Uh, and again, as of September 2018, the city has set aside, uh, over 9.1 million dollars, uh, including investment earnings, uh, to prepay, uh, the, uh, cost of retiree Uh, one of the things we are looking at also is to potentially, uh, have sponsorship or naming rights, uh, for Ingalls. Um, we have, uh, a proposal, uh, on, uh, that, on the table currently, uh, that city staff is, uh, is still evaluating and at the appropriate time, we'll bring that back to the City Council, uh, if it makes economic sense for us to pursue that, uh, naming rights or sponsorship, uh, for Ingalls. Economic development, that was our strategic direction number four. And regarding that, uh, there are several items that, action plans that we had to execute. Uh, we stressed the fact that we need to increase our share, uh, revenue. We stressed the fact that we need to increase our share revenue on transient occupancy taxes. And the way we are going to do that was to bring in two new brand hotels here in the city of Norco with a minimum of eight, eighty rooms each. During two thousand and seventeen, we made progress in that as far as approving one hotel, the Holiday Inn Express. Unfortunately, the construction of that hotel has been delayed. However, I'm pleased to report that in two thousand and eighteen, the Wood Spring, the Wood Spring Suites was approved. This is a hundred-and-twenty-two-room suite hotel here in the city of Norco, and that hotel is currently under construction. We also had a goal of bringing two full-service restaurants here in the city of Norco during this strategic plan period. And so far, we, we have been successful in attracting a couple of restaurants here in the city of Norco. The Debbie Room on Hamner Avenue and Town and Country is currently in the process of being opened here in the city of Norco. In addition to that, is the completion of the Field House at Silverlex, which is a full sit-down restaurant here in the city of Norco. Also, we, we plan to bring additional national retail chains here in the city of Norco as part of this strategic plan on the economic development. That has largely been met by the fact that CVS opened at the Norco Village and expanded and improved State of Brothers supermarket also opened at Norco Village. The planning commission approved the development of a grocery outlet and shopping center on Sixth Street, and that will be going under construction in the months ahead. One of the things we wanted to do also is, part of economic development is to ensure that we, we have the infrastructure that is necessary to support that economic development. As a result, one of our goals in the strategic plan was to complete key street improvements on city major business corridor, namely Hamner Avenue and Sixth Street. And since the last update, we have made significant progress towards achieving that goal. We have completed, completed slurry seal and striping of Sixth Street. And we have also paved certain segments of Hamner Avenue from Sixth Street to Fourth Street. And currently, the paving of the segment between Fourth Street and Third Street on Hamner is in progress. In addition to that, we have installed new LED street name signs on, on Sixth Street and currently working on Hamner Avenue. One more now. Again, part of economic development is, is making sure that the city is, is attractive to potential businesses. And part of, the way we accomplish that is through code enforcement. We have added a part-time code enforcement officer, and code enforcement in the city of Norco is now done on a more consistent basis. And I meet with the code enforcement staff every, every month, at the minimum, to review progress and to take additional actions as needed to make sure that the city's code is enforced, enforced on a consistent basis. Public safety was our strategic direction number five. It's certainly not the least important. It is, in fact, a very important item on the city council's strategic direction. And there are a couple of items we set out to achieve in the area of public safety. One is to have a dedicated traffic team consisting of, of two deputies to deal with increase in traffic and related issues. Again, I'm happy to report the city council approved their addition of one deputy in two thousand and seventeen. That deputy has now been added, that position filled, and is currently doing full traffic enforcement here in the city of Norco. We also wanted to add one full-time community service officer to help relieve duties for sworn officers. And I'm also happy to report that a dedicated community service officer has been added to the sheriff's department to, to help the special enforcement team devote more of their time to law enforcement duties. We have a plan to secure various city facilities, including City Hall, Ingalls, Senior Center, Public Works Yard. We have made some progress in this area. There is still some work left to be done. Contract, the Public Works Yard has actually been secured, and that is taking place already. We have done some improvements to secure the area where police vehicles are parked, and so that has already been done. We have a plan that is currently in the city budget to deal with safety concerns and security concerns in City Hall, and that is work in progress that, once we get clearance from the Department of Finance regarding the funds that have been earmarked for this, that project will be done. Public safety, part of that is, 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 is being prepared for emergencies. At your last city council meeting, the fire department brought you our city's updated emergency operations manual. Along with our presentation, you were briefed in terms of what the city has done to prepare the emergency operations center, to make sure, from technological perspective, that is ready and for use in times of emergency. In addition to that, city staff continue to be trained with respect to their various duties that they would be taking, undertaking in time, in times of emergencies. I know I went that, through that very quickly, but I'll be glad to take any questions that you have.
Does council have any questions of city manager?
I have one.
Hey, Robin.
Okay, Andy, I just have a quick one, and it came up in public comment. Under community outreach, we talked about Facebook and Twitter and all of those, and all of those social media platforms tend to be very one-way right now as far as communication. So I was wondering if, in our strategic plan, is, if there's going to be some reflection on the fact of whether we want that to be two-way communication. I know our neighbors to the north do communicate with their constituents on, on some of their social media platforms. And so I, I know that it talked about having, looking at some of our social media policies and updating some of those, yeah, coming up with a comprehensive social media policy, communications process policies. Is having that two-way communication through some of our platforms going to be a part of that discussion?
Well, we have looked at that in the past, specifically with Facebook. Currently, what, the way we have the Facebook set up is we provide information through our Facebook, and folks can get that information. But we do not engage in a fourth and back with residents through Facebook. Is that correct? If you want to add anything, Cheryl?
Yes, that is correct at this point. We do not, we have looked into that option. We believe that it would require more staffing because it's a significant amount of time to keep up with the posts and provide the information. And then also, on the side of public record, then we have to maintain a much larger amount of public records related to the communication that goes back and forth on whatever social media platform we do it on, if it's one or all.
Okay, thank you.
So that will be, I'm sorry, that will be addressed in our, what we bring forth to the city council early next quarter with the various policies that we bring for approval.
Okay, perfect. So then I guess my only other input would maybe look at our on-the-record series and maybe use that as a platform to answer questions or concerns that may be developed or brought forth on those other platforms, and that way their, our residents are hearing from either staff or council directly, and maybe that would be one way to, to look at opening that bar social media.
Yeah, we already planned to, to do that.
Okay, perfect.
We will be doing that.
Perfect.
Moving forward.
That's all I have.
Bowen, anything?
I got a question, Andy. You talking about beefing up the security at City Hall, like what kind of steps are you going to take on that?
I can speak to that, but we have already conducted some analysis of what we need to do in terms of protecting the counter area, protecting access to restricted areas in the city hall. And so those are some of the measures we are going to be taking. Brian, any, any other details on that?
Some of the security equipment we have is, is outdated at this point in time, and some of it is not replaceable. And that includes both the sheriff's department. So when we look at that, we look at cameras, we also look at the server which supports those type of things. So when we, our evaluation requires an upgrade in those particular areas, and if the funding becomes available this, this spring, then we would start the process of replacement of the security, existing security system that's there.
But I'm talking about the front areas to protect the employees behind the counter. I know at RTA, we just approved it a few months ago, at both the major terminals, Riverside and Hemet. The people that don't have a badge or a pass are only going to be able to come into the lobby. The employees will be behind bulletproof glass, everybody else is locked up in there. And so some crazy comes in, he's just in a little confined area, and he can't hurt the people that work in there. And I'm sorry, I've said this before, and got laughed at one time by a former council person, laughed and said, well, we have the sheriff's department in the back door back here. Well, sometimes they're not there, and these people are setting ducks out here in the lobby. And I think we need to talk about maybe putting up glass like they got in the banks and stuff like that to protect the people.
We have done some initial analysis on that. Those alternatives are very expensive, and we can have more discussion on that as we move into next fiscal year, as far as part of our infrastructure discussion. Right now, the funding that was set aside in the budget was really for more of the security systems there. We have evaluated the counters, the height of the counters, actually even putting various blocks or making it difficult to hop over a counter. A lot of government facilities are going to the two-way glass and different various things, those have been looked at. They're just very expensive alternatives.
Yeah, I know they're expensive, but when you compare that to a life, they're not expensive. And I'm sorry, cameras is okay when nobody's around. You can see who was there, but a camera's not going to stop somebody from going in there and, and doing a bunch of damage to the employees. I think that's something that we really need to look at.
We'll make note of that.
That's it. Kevin?
Just really briefly, Andy. I go back to a few years ago, and we went to, I don't remember if it was League of Cities, and we had, the only communication was the water bill. And I can remember going, I want that, and I want that, and I want that.
And the website, but it wasn't.
It was, let's just say it was not as good as the website today, and that one's being approved every day. And I just really want to commend you on, you were asked by council several years ago to find ways of communication. The truth of matter is, I think everybody knows our phone number. If you avail yourself of those communication devices, you will know everything that's going on in the city of Norco. If you don't, then you won't. I am also really impressed with the fact that you're ahead of other cities on the pension pay forward plan. That is huge. It's something that for the next fifty years, Norco is going to be ahead of the system because of what you've done, and I really applaud you for that. And the on-the-record series.
Just want to make a clarification of that. We are, we are still looking at how we are going to potentially prepay pension. However, where we have made a significant amount of progress is.
Healthcare, yes, forgive me, you're right.
Retirement healthcare, where we have set aside over nine million dollars to, to take care of that liability.
Yeah, I should have said that, you're right. In talking to other cities, they're not even playing that game yet. And then the on-the-record series is something I'm really excited about, and I think that that's really commendable. In terms of the strategic plan, I think that there was a lot of community members involved in that, council was involved in that, and I think that I'm very, very pleased with the progress that you've made on this. Thank you to the staff, to everybody on that. I really, really appreciate it. I came along in two thousand and nine, and we were in trouble. And the way we've dug out of that hole and kept our sheriff's substation and all those things, it's a miracle. So thank you.
We'd also provide one further clarification with respect to pension funding, and that is annually, we are required to contribute certain amount to the city's pension system. And we meet all those annual required contributions set by California Public Employees Retirement System.
I understand. Thank you, Andy. That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Greg?
No questions.
Andy, I just have one, and I really appreciate what we have done up in the areas where the Melrose or the CFDs are saving the people up there, especially since I live up there. But that is the one area that it's always hard for people to buy into that area when they realize that besides their normal property tax, they have that Melrose tax hanging over them. And what you and what staff has done to the finance department has been great in redoing these bonds to lessen the amount. I'm hoping that, we need to get that information out. I don't know how you can do it after residents, I know you did the bond, you redid it, but this is really important, and it's one of those things in communications, especially to, and maybe we can look at that as an outreach in the future to the real estate agents in that particular area to show them how we have done that, to make those homes more attractive. I know Scott's sitting in there, but it is, it, it does make it more attractive to realize that as a city, we have lessened the burden on the homeowners in that area. So for that, I appreciate. And one other thing on communications, and I'm going to give Chad if it was your idea or if it was Matt sitting next to you. The CIP communications program, those projects that we talked about weeks ago or months ago, that has been outstanding, and I refer to that all the time to people. Let them know what we're doing. And as far as communications, we've turned this around completely in the last five years. So you and your staff, as that goes, have been excellent. So having that in mind, do we have any cards on this, Cheryl?
Yes, Mayor, I do have one card. Daniela Segovia.
Good evening, Daniela.
Hi, this is my part two. When I told you that there would be two things I wanted to address with you. With regards to, and you brought it up with social media and with on-the-record, maybe that might be the site that y'all could get together and speak to your constituents. This is the second part that I was going to discuss with you, and it's regarding the Oversight Committee. What we need to know, at least those are, there are others. What we need to know, at least those are, there are others that are asking me to inquire with you guys. Who is going to, just answer a couple of questions. Who is going to pick the Oversight Committee? What are the qualifications going to be for one to run for that position? And/or are they running for it? Are they just chosen? We need to know what the criteria is that one needs to have to be able to meet it, and when the applications need to be submitted for that. And that, and perhaps you guys might be able to use the On the Record, because so many of your constituents truly want to know, probably close to the 2,000 that voted no on R. Also, as an aside, for my three minutes is up, Mr. Councilman Hannah, is there really, has there been, I have never heard in all of my time here that someone has assaulted a member in City Hall getting a permit or paying their water bill. Is that something that the citizens of Norco should be concerned about? Has it occurred? Have there been threats? That's all.
Do you look at what's going on?
Is it something that when I get back and I let people and they start asking me about what happened, that I'm going to tell them that we need to be concerned, that the city wants to put up two-way glass?
Do you say what?
Well, that's why I'm inquiring. Has there been a threat?
I was just expressing my feelings on it. We're talking about security.
Okay. I will just wait for answers from you guys. Thank you.
Andy, could you provide her an answer on the oversight and what steps we have to take once the election results have been certified?
Yes, the steps pertaining to the duties, the selection, the qualifications and all of that pertaining to the Oversight Citizens Oversight Committee will be established through a public process. And that means every Norco resident will have a chance to provide input with respect to all of those areas and before a resolution is brought to the City Council to act upon. We are, again, at this point, not ready to do that. And until the election results are satisfied, and once that happens, we'll begin that process. And yes, we will be using the short video messages to provide information on that to Norco residents as necessary.
Thank you. And as far as the security things, we're going to lean into our law enforcement partners in here to determine what the security measures will be taken along with the qualified personnel for the protection of our employees. Having that in mind, no other cards?
No cards, Mayor.
I'll bring it back to the council. Any other further questions of staff? See no other further questions. Do I have a motion for this to receive and file?
Motion received.
We have a first and a second. And vote.
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
Moving on to 7A, public hearings. On ordinance number 1043 is the first reading. Ordinance to the City Council, City of Norco authorizes implementation of a community choice aggregation program. City manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you recall, last August, or this past August, the City Council voted to tentatively become a member of the Western Community Energy JPA. The purpose of that JPA is to form a community choice aggregation program. Through a community choice aggregation program, businesses and residents in that jurisdiction will have a chance to select who provides them electric energy. In our case, if the WCE, Western Community Energy, moves along, that will be Western Community Energy as well as Edison. Edison will continue to serve as the entity that actually delivers electricity to all consumers here in the city of Norco. With respect to the WCE that is currently underway, in order to implement the community choice aggregation program, the California Public Utilities Commission requires that WCE, again, Western Community Energy, adopt an implementation plan. That implementation plan primarily deals with the structure of their organization, issues pertaining to their forecast of electric needs, customer service issues, their financial plan for making sure that the organization is viable. That draft implementation plan has been produced for transmittal to California Public Utilities Commission. This implementation plan needs to be received by the California Public Utilities Commission before December 31st in order to ensure that the CCA can be implemented by 2020. Again, as part of that implementation plan, WRCOG, through Western Community Energy, has scheduled a public hearing to review the implementation plan. I believe that that public hearing has been scheduled for December 12th, December 12th at WRCOG administrative offices that are located in Riverside. In order to, by the way, also a copy of that implementation plan is available through the city's website, is also available through WRCOG website. In order to move forward, again, with respect to continuing to explore the possibility of implementing this CCA, the city is required, as one of the member agencies, to adopt the attached ordinance. The purpose of this ordinance, again, is to continue the process of exploring the viability of CCA becoming a reality here in the city of Norco, as well as those member agencies that have joined the CCA. The only thing I do want to add here, this in Norway commits the city to becoming a permanent member of the JPA. The city has the option of withdrawing from this JPA up until the time the JPA actually enters into contract for the purchase of electric energy. Up until that time, the city can withdraw its membership from the JPA. What we've been told is that the contract, potential contract to purchase electric energy would not be executed until at least October or September next year. With that, again, staff is recommending that you approve the attached ordinance number 1043, again, for the purposes of the city continuing to participate in the JPA that continues to explore the viability of CCA in the city of Norco. With that, I can take any questions.
Just for my full counsel, the other people on this, the WCE, other cities that are participating, I think we're all sitting at the same position that I am, is that we are taking this very carefully, very cautiously. They projected on the WCE a 2%, a minimum of 2% savings to the customers. Doesn't sound like a lot unless you're a big customer. But that's where they're at, and some of the models that are out there may be more. But again, I don't think, and Andy can correct me if I'm wrong, every one of us is going to end this with a very cautious deal before we go any further. So with that, Robin, any questions of staff? Burwin?
Yeah, get this understood again. Just because we, if we pass this tonight, that don't mean as an electrical customer that we have to sign up for it. We can stay with Edison or this one, either one. We have a choice. We're not mandatorily going to have to switch, right?
Yeah, so this does not commit the city to becoming a permanent member in the community choice aggregation program. Even if the city down the road decides to become a permanent member of the CCA, residents and businesses in the city will have a choice of opting out from that program. So they'll still have a choice of going with Edison if that's who they choose to be their energy provider.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin? Greg?
What we saw, like on the consent calendar, there's seven cities that are moving forward at this time. What is the total amount of member agencies that would have had the opportunity to join this program?
I don't know what the entire population is, but there are still a significant number of cities that could join. And by the way, membership is not just limited to cities in Riverside or Western Riverside. Cities from anywhere, including LA or San Bernardino County can also become a member of this CCA at their choice. There are no restrictions as far as any city's ability to participate in the program.
In this specific JPA?
That's correct.
Okay. That's the only question I have. Thanks.
Do you have any cards on this?
No cards, Mayor.
Oh, okay, we'll be in public hearing. There's any cards on this?
No cards, Mayor.
Okay, there's no cards, we'll bring it back. Anybody have any further questions of staff? Burwin?
Just to confirm, we can bail out of this at any time, even with approval of this ordinance?
Yes, absolutely. Until the CCA, which in this case is WCE, Western Community Energy executes purchase energy contract. And the reason for that is obviously, once they make that commitment, then there are some liabilities that have to be, that somebody has to pay.
Thank you.
And Greg, you're asking the same question our brothers to the north are asking us and everybody else. Yes. I'm just telling you, this group is very cautious with it. We have approached other cities. They have reached out to Marietta, to Meckel, to Orange County, and things, like the city manager said. This is unknown, uncharted territory for us, so everybody's taking it very slowly. And I did fail this, the email that I drew, received from Mr. Seager, if we can put that into the public comments, or his comments about the WCE or the community program.
Okay, we'll put that on the record.
Thank you. I think everybody in council got that one. All right, having that in mind, I'll bring it back. Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance? We got a first and a second.
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
Moving on to 7B, confirming costs for tumbleweeds. Chief, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. The item before you tonight is the authority to bill for weed abatement, which the city completed on three parcels within the city under the old weed abatement program for a total cost of $684. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Does council have any questions of the chief? Burwin, down there?
No.
Robin?
No.
Kevin?
No.
Greg? And I have none. Hang on, we got a public. Any cards on this matter open in public hearing?
No cards, Mayor.
No cards, bring it back, because Colin's going to tell me I'm not going to do it right. Okay, all right. Do I hear, bringing it back, does anybody have any further questions of the chief? Not hearing any.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. We have a first and a second. All right. Moving on to item eight, City Council, City Manager, Staff, Communications. Robin, I'll start with you. And Burwin?
Question for Chad. Answer this.
Got a bunch of people complaining about our signals. I know we've talked about it. Somebody else called me about it. The light. I set that through four. Signal changes between. Happens on weekends. We're going to put this back in.
We don't have video detection, otherwise we'd be able to handle the traffic signals if we had video detection. It's far more expensive. We project that the roadwork is going to start maybe late next week, but most likely the first week in December. And then, once the roadway is paved, then they'll go back in and cut in the loops, and then the signals will be back to normal.
Colin, you got anything for, Greg?
Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you. Greg?
On Burwin's question, as we were tracking ahead of schedule, are we slipping in schedule now?
No, we're pretty much right about there. The water line has just finished up basically this week. They're just buttoning up some small concrete work in some of the cross gutters, et cetera. And like I said, they're trying to get the, start to remove those of the asphalt next week if they can, if they can keep up the pace. But at worst, it's going to be the first week in December, and that should be done, again, within two weeks, everything should be completed because they'll do the paving probably within one week at a minimum. And then they'll go back through and do striping the following week, probably wait about seven to 10 days, but at least the surface will be there and be far better, and they'll cut in the, they'll cut in the loops at that time. So we really should be done and back in order. I'm projecting probably by the 15th of December at the latest.
Okay.
But yeah, I know everybody's anxious, and so am I.
Two weeks.
Yes.
Okay.
Don't do, don't let me do that, dude.
So what was brought up under public comments?
Andy?
And just a suggestion that maybe what we could do in our weekly newsletter is have the city clerk just refresh everybody's, everyone's memory on how the public process works on a, on a public hearing as far as, there's a 10-day notification in newspapers and postings in different areas, okay? And that how the planning commission works with notification of impacted property owners within a radius of 300 feet up to 25 property owners. And maybe we could just have a little reiteration of what our process is for notification on public hearings. Just a suggestion.
Andy's writing them down, so.
And on that note, the streets and trails at the meeting you had, is that a public hearing? Was, were property owners notified?
No, not for that, because it's not a, there's not any type of zoning changes or anything. I think that, or planning commission might do that, but we don't normally notify residents.
Okay, so there is no, just public notice of the meeting, but no notification of property owners?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And happy Thanksgiving.
Chad, I have one question before we talk about Hamner. Chad, I have one question before we talk about Hamner. It came up about the fire hydrants. Were you replacing all the hydrants that we could?
All of them.
All of them?
Yeah.
Is that just because of the pressure or the demand or safety reasons?
They're old.
Okay.
We just replaced them.
Do we get, do we get a, or a kickback or a refund on those old ones?
No, no, the contractor scraps them.
He scrapped them, okay. This question was asked, so go back there. And then I want to thank Brian, your staff up at Senior Center and all the volunteers. I know the Lions Club along with Rotary for the Thanksgiving dinner and all the council members that showed up there. I cut 100 pieces of pumpkin pie and I don't even like pumpkin pie, so it was, it was quite an honor to serve all those people. Appreciate that.
And we thank those service clubs for their participation.
Thank you. All right, Cheryl, you have a thing? Matt? Chad, anything else?
Other than talked about Hamner, Bluff Street is finished as far as the paving. We did striping today, so that road's a lot better. As far as condition, it's been pretty poor for a long time, so hopefully the residents over in that area enjoy the new conditions of the road.
How's our slurry over there on the rest of the hills? They haven't striped it yet.
The slurry is for the most part complete, but there are a lot of deficiencies that we've identified.
Okay.
So, we need to work with the contractor to do a lot of touch-up.
I noticed some grass growing up between the curbing and the asphalt, so make sure we hit those.
We'll be probably fortunately working on that for several weeks.
Okay.
I imagine.
All right. Brian, anything? Thank you. Cheryl? I mean, Sheena, I'm sorry. Thank you. Scott, anything?
Couple things. First thing I'd like to say, thank you to Chad and his shop, Fire Hydrants, Paving, Bluff Street, the EVP on six, the name, amazing public safety improvements, greatly appreciated. Especially Bluff Street. It's a, a cut through that the Corridon Engine uses frequently and it was in pretty rough shape, so, so thank you. Their lumbar's will appreciate it. I'd also like to take the opportunity to update council on, as you recall, two weeks ago, I gave a pretty, pretty stern warning about the weather it was predicted and the state itself suffered some pretty significant fires that required us to use our Western States Compact and bring fire engines from Texas to Montana all the way to the state of California. As tonight, as we sit here tonight, we just received an update that the Woosley Fire in Ventura County is 100% contained. Unfortunately, 100% done.
Contained, right.
Done. The campfire sits at 153,000 acres at 85% contained. Now, we're transitioning to flash flood warnings for that entire community, five to six inches of rains predicted through the next couple of days. As of tonight, 18,431 structures destroyed, residential structures, commercial structures, 738 damaged. There are still 35,000 residents evacuated. As recently as Sunday, we deployed USR FEMA Task Force Six as well as a couple others from the state to respond to Paradise and the other surrounding communities. One of our Norco captains is on that task force. The task force resides in Riverside City. 33 members of that task force from this county were sent to Paradise. They are grid searching building by building, looking for the remaining victims. As it sits this evening, I believe it's 82 confirmed fatalities, they're still missing 870. As we enjoy our Thanksgiving tomorrow, I just want to reflect on our members, law enforcement, firefighters, the volunteers that are still actively searching those residences up there for our victims. Captain Shirakawa deployed on inch and 13 of the Woosley Fire and was home for four hours on Sunday when he received a call to deploy with Task Force Six. As you can imagine, that's taking a toll or is mentally. So, as you visit our fire stations and you see him, give him a pat on the back when he gets back in a couple of weeks. On a more positive note, we'll be hosting Thanksgiving at the Hillside Fire Station tomorrow, so when you all eat too much and want to go for a walk, your sheriff's deputies and firefighters will be there with their families, enjoying food from, well, the families will be showing up at 11:30 to help cook and all that good stuff we're going to eat in the afternoon, 2:30 or 3:00. You're more than welcome to come by, say hello to, to the first responders and our families, get a good laugh and work off your, your pie. And I ask one favor, if you do come by and we're not there, please check the oven. Or the smoker out back, please. Last year was very busy, we were in and out all day with the engine companies there, so yeah, don't, don't burn the turkey for us. That's all I have, thank you.
Chief Beck, anything? I see you sitting back there quietly, anything? Thank you. Bob, welcome.
Thank you.
Sergeant.
Looking forward to working with you.
Okay, thank you. And with that, happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Stay safe out there. All right, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.